Noon portion of the work session for today, Tuesday, August 12th. This is Chair Catherine Harrington, and we have a full complement of commissioners here. Commissioner Jerry Willie, Vice Chair Commissioner Pam Treves, Commissioner Nefisafian, Commissioner Jason Snyder, and myself, Chair Harrington. We have one more topic on today's agenda, and it's a big one. Jail capacity and community correction center capacity study project report and next step. So turn it over to you, Ms. Calvert.
Great. Thank you, Chair Harrington. Good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Board. As per the record, I'm Erin Calvert, one of the Assistant County Administrators. I'm pleased today to be joining Sheriff Caprice Massey, a Director of Facilities Fleet and Parks Laurel Brown, and our guest Erin Baggerly from Matrix Consulting, who's here in person today, which is just great. We will be presenting the jail and community corrections center capacity study, as you mentioned, also called the Needs Assessment Report, and talk with your board about some potential next steps for this project. It has been a little while since we've been before your board on this topic. So today's presentation will include some context about the jail and community correction center and how it fits into the public safety and justice ecosystem in Washington County. We'll provide a summary of the project milestones since the last work session. Sheriff Massey is going to talk about a jail overview that includes jail mandates and some responsibilities in the county in running the jail. And then we'll hear from Erin Baggerly on the report. And then Laurel is going to round out the presentation with some potential next steps for your board's consideration. The jail capacity and community correction center needs assessment and report completed by Matrix Consulting and included in your packet. It provides really important baseline analysis of current population trends, projecting a need for between 751 and 947 jail beds by the year 2055. What was the last number again? Seven, 947. Thank you. Erin will discuss the methodology and data used in their models in the upcoming slides. But I did want to just kind of level set your board and let you know the information. The projections will be incorporated into upcoming discussions that include design, programming, and funding. And these discussions will include additional conversations with your board, the sheriff's office, the district attorney's office, and the court, as well as the jail capacity executive steering and leadership work group committees and other stakeholders before a conclusion on recommended capacity is reached. Laurel will speak more about that and this process after the Matrix presentation. As usual, we have some policy questions for your board to be thinking of ahead of time. Does your board have any questions about the Matrix report? Does the board have any questions about the project overview timeline or next steps? And is there any additional information that your board needs for staff to proceed with next steps? I be missing a slide. I'm just going to proceed then. Kind of an overview slide on there, but. We'll talk a little bit about project milestones today. As you recall, we were last before your board in work session in January of 2024. That work session included in your packet, the 2007 criminal justice master plan study that often referred to as the Bennett Report, as well as a letter to your board from former Sheriff Pat Garrett and County Administrator Tanya Angie, that outlined the need for an updated jail capacity study, which your board has supported and of course directed to occur. At this work session, staff also proposed a pretty aggressive project timeline, and we'll be talking with you about an updated timeline today. In the spring of 2024, after completing a request for proposal process, Matrix was awarded the contract and began their work shortly thereafter. In July of 2024, Erin and his team conducted a site visit and met with your board and several stakeholders, multiple staff and partners, to really get kind of the lay of the land and understand Washington County and the philosophy and needs. Also in July, under Sheriff John Cook and I kicked off the executive steering leadership work group committees, made up of many of the same folks to launch the work of this project. In partnership with Matrix, staff participated in many meetings between October of 2024 and May of this year to really look at the data and refining the report. And it turns out, no surprise to all of you, that the COVID years, our staffing issues, and then the jail pod closures have really provided some challenges in looking at that data and the way that we project that out. And then it's truly been just your staff capacity in our ability to bring this project back to you in today's August. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Sheriff Massey.
Thanks so much. I just want to give a brief overview of the current Washington County jail status. We are the only county jail in Washington County. And when we're fully functioning with 572 beds, we are the second smallest jail per capita in Oregon. However, with three housing units closed due to critical infrastructure repairs, we are by far the smallest jail in the state of Oregon. It serves all of our cities and, you know, all of our urban unincorporated areas, roughly over 611,000 residents. And then the jail really is a critical piece of our local public safety ecosystem as we endeavor not just to house adults in custody while they await trial or are serving sentences, but ensure that we are providing appropriate behavioral and medical health facilities for those adults in custody because we are their one-stop shopping for their care and ensuring that they have the programming necessary to help ensure that the adult in custody that we release into our community is a better, more educated, healthier person so that it provides that additional safety in our communities. Thank you. So let's talk a little bit about statutory requirements, Sheriff. Probably the most significant is that the sheriff statutorily in Oregon is required to provide a county jail. The county jail provides a space for us to hold defendants when they are pretrial and when they are post conviction for up to 12 months. Now, there are a lot of circumstances that will have an adult in custody in the Washington County jail for years at a time. For instance, if you think about measure 11 crimes and there's a behavioral health component, it takes a defendant up to two, three, sometimes four years to get through the mental health evaluations to be able to determine whether or not they can stand trial. And then, of course, the courts have to have the capacity to get someone through the entire court process from just adjudication through conviction. And then we have several adults in custody who stay in custody for years post conviction that never go to prison because if they are convicted, let's, as an example, say, five different charges and receive 12 months in custody for each of those charges, and it's consecutive. Because it does not reach the Department of Corrections 12 months plus one day, they will spend that entire five years in the Washington County jail. So I just wanted to sort of level set that piece about, yes, it is 12 months and less. However, if each charge measures that 12 months, then they are going to stay in custody for whatever that is consecutively. So it's critical that we provide long-term services for the adults in custody that we serve. We are also required to ensure that we provide a safe and secure environment, not just for our adults in custody and those that are in our custody and care, but for all of our staff as well. And knowing that today, we have a drastically different population that we are serving than we did when I first started in this work with a much more robust behavioral health and medical needs for our adults in custody. So we are obviously committed to 24/7 medical care, which is the largest county contract that we hold to provide those essential services to our adults in custody. And we have the requirements to have a nutritionist on staff to make sure that the meals that are provided are nutritious and accepting.
Please. So the next slide goes into the report, right?
Right.
Before we do that, well, apparently in the presentation that's queued up, it's missing a slide, but it's in all of our packets. And I'd really like
Let's go through it.
To make some, at least some comments, if not walking through it. So and you highlighted much of this, but I want to make sure it's clear that the jail, this study is on the county jail, the county community corrections center.
Yes.
But also part of the infrastructure in handling the adults in custody also goes to our capacity for parole and probation
Right.
as well. And one of the big things that all of you experts have taught me is there are multiple input channels
Yes.
as I refer to them. So one of the things that will help me when you go through the report is, you know, Ms. Calvert, you talked about how this is baseline analysis. So I'm going to be interested in learning more about, was this about more statistical analysis? Or did we take a look at, as the sheriff mentioned, the composition of the, one of the incoming streams is different?
Yes.
Because I imagine the future out to 2055 is going to be different than what the past has. So I will need some reinforcement on that. And you've just done a really good job for me of articulating the input streams and the nature of after someone has served their time, for lack of a better phrase, they go back into community, and that's where the programs are so vital. It's all, these are people we're talking about and our community.
Correct. And I think it's really important to highlight, or maybe just emphasize what you just said because they're adults in custody for a moment in time, but they are community and residents for the long term. And so that's who we're serving, and that's why our goal has to be not just housing. It has to be supporting and transitioning so that they can be in a better space to provide a better experience for all of our community members, to include the person who's coming out. And so that's why we are so committed to having wraparound care while they're there and providing individualized services, but then also providing wraparound resources and transition programming to give that warm handoff into the community. So they're not just going out the door not knowing where to go.
Okay.
Thank you. Colleagues, did you have any other questions on that illustration?
Thank you. I have a question before we get into the next phase. I was really interested in what you had to say about the span of time people can spend as AICs. What's the longest?
Is there a long?
Is there so?
Yeah. I will say that as far as my memory will take me, the longest person that I spent time supervising in the jail was over five years because of the extraordinarily, well, actually, the extraordinary long time before because they actually spent so much time at the state hospital getting restored. The state hospital is not doing that for that long of a term anymore, but they were down at the state hospital for over a year getting restored before they could even come back and engage in the entire court process pre-adjudication. And then when they were sentenced, they were there for an extended period of time. But I know for a fact that that's not near the longest because we've had people doing restoration pretrial down at the state hospital. And this was back in the early 2000s, like 2000, between 2004 and 2010, where they were down there for over two years before they could come back, being fully medicated and restored so that they could participate in their own defense and their court proceeding.
I think of the jail as short term, and that's designed, but it's not necessarily what happens in real life.
Well, and there's, there's, right, sometimes, there's an adult in custody that I won't be specific with names, but their parent communicated a lot with your board and with me about their son's experience. And he was one of those who was sentenced by the judge on separate charges to a year or less. And so there wasn't the opportunity for him to move on to Department of Corrections. He stayed in our custody, which was an impact to their family.
But we are obviously following the judge's orders.
Of course.
Yes, it's statutory requirement.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. We'll get to the fun parts. And Chair Harrington, I appreciate the question about this presentation. And yes, it will be encompassing. There is some statistics about it. But it's also, we evaluated that entirety of the adult in custody, whether or not they're in a secure bed at the jail or if they're a community correction center and how they're involved with that. Washington County is very forward in their criminal justice system and the types of services that are provided out there to criminal justice-involved individuals that are involved in that in the county. You've been very forward-thinking in getting as many people out of a secure bed and out of the jail as possible as you can. You have a lot of community service providers that are providing a variety of different types of services to meet the needs of the population. And from our perspective, my team's perspective, it's refreshing to see this level of community care that is out there, as the sheriff talked about, that wraparound service and how they're involved through that. And that, some of that impact is very difficult to quantify in a study like this because it is reducing that recidivism rate of returning back into the criminal justice system. You can capture some of that, but it's hard to capture that when they maybe go across the county line. They go somewhere else within the state or even outside of the state with that. They have a positive benefit where they're not returning back into the criminal justice system. So we did look at that and looked at the impacts of that and how forward-thinking the county has been, the sheriff's office has been, and your service providers have been throughout, over the past few years and the past decades as well. So, and I know things are continuing to involve with the criminal justice system, and the sheriff's office continues to work at getting people outside of a secure bed or even a community correction bed, getting the true services that they need. So I'm going to go through the report here, just a quick overview of what this study encompassed. It was a review of the operations and programs to understand the impact of those justice-involved individuals, understanding what services are out there. How has it impacted adult in custody population? And how has that influenced the number of beds being utilized within the county, whether that's secure or community correction beds with that? We did look at those diversion programs and that impact on bed space. As I said, there is a lot of individuals who 10 years ago would have been in a secure bed, but because of the programs that you have within this county and the service providers you have around here, they're not in a secure bed anymore, even a community correction bed. They have been diverted out and away to get the treatment and the services or programming that they need. We did look at the story data trends for diversion, admissions, average daily population, average length of stay, releases, et cetera, as part of this. There was some good data that we had received from the sheriff's office and the county related to this. One of these areas, you know, we talked about a little bit earlier about some of those long-termers who have maybe been in the facility for an extended period of time, whether or not that is pretrial or under a sentence here. The average length of stay has gone up slightly over the last 10 years, but it's due to the evolution of who is actually in the facility itself. You've got more serious charges, more mental health, more mental illness. Those individuals who cannot be out there. As you are probably well aware of the state, with measure 110 a few years ago and some revisions of that, that's kind of ebb and flow. And so you have more serious individuals and more severe charges that are actually in the facility now than you had 10 years ago. A lot of those, most of the misdemeanors are out. It's mostly felonious individuals that are in the jail itself.
Can I, a quick question on that? Is it also because they're in there longer because it takes us longer to get them through the court system?
Yes.
So it's kind of a start to finish. There's all kinds of problems.
Correct. And it all compounds very quickly. If the judicial system gets backed up, then the number of individuals, adults in custody, that's going to increase. Average length of stay is going to increase with that. And that kind of, that perfect storm came together 2021, 2022 with that, where you had more serious individuals with charges in the facility. The courts were backed up coming out of the pandemic, and that's just kind of that perfect storm where it did increase in influence who was actually housed in the facility itself.
But are we free and clear of that? I feel like now it's not flowing efficiently yet.
That's correct. We still have backlogs. Our failure to appear, you hear about often, is a little bit connected to the jail and the court backup and backlog.
Thank you. If I might add just one more thing. Much right now that is continuing that backlog is the defense attorney shortage as well.
Got it.
That we're experiencing, and we've had to release people who have been in custody for 10 days or more without an attorney assigned.
Thank you.
As we've just all discussed with these various situations, the criminal justice system is very complex, and it only takes one small hiccup to really impact the whole criminal justice system, whether or not its defense attorney is not there. And unfortunately, the jail is the one who catches a lot of that and has to hold on to that individual or release it when maybe they shouldn't be here or can't get them in the right program of services because of other players within the broader criminal justice system that can influence that.
Thank you.
So as part of our study, we did review demographic data, looking at individuals involved, their charges, those types of components with that. And then ultimately, we did project the adult in custody population based on historic trends, some different scenarios, did that for both the jail and the community correction center too. So this chart here is a historic average daily population for the last 10 years. The blue numbers are jail, secure beds. The red numbers are community correction individuals involved with that. And as you can see in 2020, there was a massive drop, as can be expected with the COVID-19 pandemic. It picked back up in 2022 and 2023, around 500 AICs there, and then dropped in 2024 due to some maintenance and some housing unit closures within the jail. The community correction beds, they also had some closures due to staffing and some other facility concerns as well, coming out of 2020 and 2021. And so that has reduced their number of average daily individuals there as well.
Can I ask one question on these numbers? So let's just take 2024. You got 423 people in jail. How many of those, roughly, are the ones that you were talking about that are long-termers? They're in there for the 12 months per charge, maybe longer term, which take up a space for a person who just gets arrested and then charged and then hasn't gone to court yet. So, but now we got to kick them loose because we don't have bed space. So I mean, what's the impact of the long-termers on our availability to meet the demands of daily criminal activity?
Let me look into that.
I mean, is it like five or 10, or is it like 100?
Yeah.
You're not even know.
It's just rough.
I mean, is it a small total number?
It's really the smallest total number now. Our population used to be about 50/50 sentenced and pretrial. And now we are closer to like 20% sentenced, and everyone else is pretrial. So it's not actually the biggest determining factor. The biggest determining factor is being able to get through the pretrial to adjudication system. And the fact that we have at this time 380 beds available, and it's really been that standard for about a year because of the repairs that are happening right now with the roof and the HVAC and all of those things. We're finally back to a fully staffed space with hiring, not people that are tested out. And then I just, information is that we are at 25% of our population, however, who's measure 11. And so those trials take an increasingly long time to get through.
So when we talk about beds, are we talking about the blue and the red together? Or just blue?
Just blue.
Just blue.
That's what I thought. Okay, I should say. And it was jail beds.
Yeah, jail beds.
Okay, I should be specific.
Because the red is community correction.
Right.
That's where our overflow goes.
We have had some pretrial adults in custody over there, which it wasn't actually built for.
Well, it's gotten more complicated in 2020. But I think one thing that I could use the reminder of, and I look to all of you. The sheriff has been working hard on staffing and training. We have a hit in 2025 on community corrections, especially because of the state budget and not accepting the actual cost study. And we had to lay off additional people before the end of the fiscal year. I mean, hurts my heart.
Yes.
But the third thing is, Laurel, you and your team, and it's across the organization, don't get me wrong, but you're the key person I know who on Ms. Angie's staff, who is implementing all the critical facilities improvements. And you've given us great communications that I have gobbled up to know that all of those different programs are proceeding. And I see a light at the end of the tunnel where those facility updates will be done. And this is where, I'm calling a friend here, that lifeline for the correct answer in terms of what is the target? What year is the target for the jail repairs to be completed? And the community correction center, the physical facility completion, 2026 or 2027?
It's actually December 2026, the end of December 2026.
So light at the end of the tunnel, a lot of progress has been made. And I just want to make sure we celebrate that moment a little bit as we talk about needs. And certainly, we have operational dollar needs continued.
And that would put us back to like 2018, where we were there. Is that right?
In terms of facility?
Yeah.
Capacity.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's the highest bar charts there.
Correct. I will caveat.
It should not be 600.
Yes.
What this number here shows, average daily population, it also includes force releases, which were
Well, that's
but they should have been in a secure jail bed.
Right.
Jail bed. They were not. They were forced to leave.
We have 572 beds.
And we have, actually.
Well, that's what I feel, the jail.
Yeah.
We have to leave about a 10%. This is something
So give us two numbers that you want me to comprehend right now as a working threshold number for each of the jail and the community correction center. And if you don't have it on the tip of your tongue, that's fine. Just come back to us.
The community correction center will now be at 167 beds due to the state funding that you talked about, Chair Harrington. So that will be the max capacity for funding once the critical facilities are completed.
And
Was that number, can I, sorry?
177, down from 215.
And 572 minus 10% is, it's a little bit more than 500. Great. Nice back of the envelope math for you. Thank you very much.
And if anyone has any interest in knowing why we minus that 10%, just let me know, and I'm happy to share.
Actually, I'll talk about that in a little bit.
I will not steal your thunder.
See, we have all the experts right here. Let's keep going.
All right. So just a little overview of our projection methodology. I'm not going to bore you with the statistics and all the fun nerdy stuff that I have with that.
But boy, are we grateful you're the top.
Yeah. I mean, we developed a baseline scenario based on that previous slide of 2015 to 2024 historic numbers for both of the facilities, looking at who should have been in the facility, either facility, and use that as a baseline projections. As we saw that 2020 dipped down and then it's like rise up through some anomaly into those data sets. So we did look at some alternative scenarios, we'll discuss a little bit later, which was five different scenarios that we did evaluate with that. And then we did do separate projection models for secure bed space in the jail and the community correction populations, just because they're two different demographics. They're two different populations, and it's important to understand the trends for those because what is influencing the jail versus community corrections is a little bit different, as we just talked about.
So this is where my brain tilts a little bit. I get they're secure, but then when you say community correction population, I understand that as residential supervision versus out in community. versus out in community supervision. So when you say community correction population, do you mean supervision? Or are you talking about secure facility and supervision facility?
Supervision facility, one across the street from the jail on that that non that very, I would say office looking building, it's the community correction center. That is when I refer to community corrections, individuals who are there under supervision. But if they walk out the door, you know, they they have that ability, but then it's a violation.
Yep, yep. Okay, thank you. I I have vocabulary now, secure facility, supervised facility.
Supervised, yep.
And then there's in community under supervision is a whole different category, which is not part of the facility.
Right, correct.
Your beds.
Correct, that that third bucket is is not included in the study because they are outside of the need for any physical facility.
Thank you.
Just a little bit more on the projection models. We had 11 different models that we considered for each projection scenario with that. Three of them were based on county population, growth and development, looking at what those demographics that the county has adopted as future growth models out to 2055, which is 30 years. Five system based models, which is looking at the system itself, such as average daily population, admission rates, length of stay, some of those components that are influenced by the two facilities themselves. And then three more statistical regression type or models that are more statistical based. Very difficult with the fluctuations and and the average daily population that we have. So looking at the security, secure custody projection population first, we did a baseline projection based on that 2015 to 2024 model. And a couple of caveats or a couple of things to keep in mind, and we talked about some of these already, is that this baseline projection really looked at the number of individuals in custody that have been diverted out. Washington County, the sheriff's office, the criminal justice system here has been very forward thinking, as I previously said, and and has diverted as many individuals as possible out of a secure bed for the most part. There's been some forced releases, as we talked about, there's maintenance issues that have impacted available beds. But anybody who should not be in the secure facility, they are primarily out. And programs, treatment, site and release, whatever that they might need. So you've diverted as many as possible. When we started looking at those programs and where there's additional opportunities, there is not a lot more opportunity out there when in context of other programs, you've got about everything here that you can possibly provide. You might need some more service providers, but it's it's difficult with that.
But based on the way you're saying that, it leads me to believe that that's not always what you see in other communities.
Correct, correct.
I'm just trying to
Washington County.
Yes, agreed.
Yeah, okay.
Of course we are.
Yeah, as the sheriff made a made a statement earlier, I believe that Washington County has one of the lowest per capita number of secure beds of anywhere in Oregon. And I would say that based on your county population, your size, same could be said across the United States.
Not just Oregon.
Not just Oregon. I mean, I think it was like something like 1.2 beds per thousand population or something like that is very low here. With that typically is in a two to four bed per thousand population that we see across the country. Washington County is very forward in the programs and services that are here, whether under the county, criminal justice system, the court system, to get people and divert them out, to get them into programs. This is something that we often do not see. Continuing on the baseline projections, it's something community correction center capacity restrictions have influenced population there, but also a number of individuals that can come from the jail across the street into that. As I mentioned earlier, forced releases is included. I end the secure bed space model because those individuals historically would have been here if there'd been enough beds within the jail. Moving forward, the current diversion and alternative programs would remain in place with no notable changes. As I said, it's hard to get more people out because everybody is out, could be out for the most part with that. A one caveat that was was challenging and we did not get a lot of data on this for was impacts of increased site and release. In 2020, a lot of law enforcement agencies due to inability to book at the jail really ramped up site and release practices. And so that information is not incorporated into projections. That is dynamically changed the criminal justice system because agencies have not been able to book as many people into jail. They have increased the use of site and release versus doing that. And I believe somebody mentioned earlier, some of the challenges with no shows to court proceedings and how that has influenced that. Because if they were in custody, they're going to make their court appearance because they're in custody. And unless they absolutely refuse that, which is very rare, is influencing that. So that has created additional backlog within the court system itself.
Yeah, they're going to get an escort.
Yeah, they're going to get a free ride over there, or free walks.
You're welcome.
And one thing that we did to look at is the sheriff mentioned earlier, you have to have about a 10% cushion within the number of available beds at any given time. You don't know who's going to walk through your Sallyport on a daily basis. And so you have to have some flexibility in in the bed space available for those more serious individuals who are coming in, who can't site and release. You can't always run at 98% capacity. Typically for local jails, they are considered at full capacity at 90% of beds utilized across the industry with that. When it comes to these projection models, you want to include that additional classification and peaking factor of 20% related to that. Because obviously you could have beds, but you don't want to put somebody who's coming in and on DUI detoxing with felonous murderers, capital murder charge with that, that doesn't go well. And so you got to have classification factors identified with that. Also male female split is important, you can't house them together. And that that is also female population over the last decade, including in Washington County, has increased. Nationally has increased as well. Historically, it used to be around 10% of the population was female. Now that ranges anywhere from 20 to 30% in most facilities.
What about, I I know we have a whole system for juveniles, obviously, but what about younger people in that category? In the adult category?
Yeah, in the adult category.
Ideally, you would like to be able to have some different housing units to, I want to say segregate those demographics out. So you got somebody that's coming in 18 years old plus a day.
Yep.
They're charged as an adult. Do you want to put them with somebody who's necessarily been in the criminal justice system in and out for 20, 30, 40 years with that? And 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 have a a MENTI internship for how to be a criminal program in your jail?
Let me show you a few things.
I I'm working with the county right now over in, it's Washoe County, Reno, Nevada. And they have a several different units there and they have a younger offender, they call them offenders, adult in custody population there. So that you're not integrating the younger under 30 crowd with those individuals who maybe have been in and out of the system for a while. But they have the capacity to do that in their facility.
And do you mind if I add real quick? I'm sorry, Chair, do you want to go? For instance, another example regarding the Washington County jail would be our special needs pod, where we have that lower level younger medically and behavioral health fragile person that would have the potential of being manipulated in a regular general population housing unit. And our deputies have a greater degree of training in behavioral health diagnoses to be able to respond to that population more effectively. So to your point, there there are a lot of different measurements that influence our classification. You don't want people from opposing gangs in the same housing unit, for instance, stuff like that.
And ultimately, this affects the capacity by saying you can't fill every bed all the time.
Correct.
You have to have so 20%, 10, 10% for the kind of booking and 10% for the, we can't optimize.
Classification, yeah.
Right.
And you call that classification.
Correct.
And it's a process that everyone goes through prior to being housed that includes that considers experience, charges, threat.
And I really appreciate hearing about that being a BKM for this kind of work. At some point, I'm hoping in the presentation today, based upon your expertise, you can also give us a BKM for, okay, so you do a 30 year forecast. But what is, what is a good practice for revisiting what the reality is compared to what the forecast is? I think as as we're still in the new new journey and the early part of this new journey, best for us to have a a working assumption than none.
Okay, I'll I'll admit, I don't know what a BKM is.
Best known practice.
Well, practice is a BKP.
Method.
Okay.
Model.
Okay.
I was
That's kind of like KPI.
Best key measurement.
So just let me, I want to go back to another comment you made about we can't put somebody in this detoxing with a felon and all that. So obviously our cat is coming online. So will that, will our officers be able to use that as an option rather than taking them to jail if they have to detox? I don't know if you're familiar with our cat, but
I recall it in conversation, I'm not sure exactly what it means, because it's a treatment center, right?
Right, it's a treatment center for for if nothing else, one of the features is going to be sobering.
Sobering.
And so instead of bringing, taking them to jail to sober up and dry out maybe a little bit, we could take them to our other facilities.
That that is, that is a policy decision that that's county and partners, law enforcement, policy decision makers will have to make related to that on how that facility would be used. I think probably more than likely that would be for, you know, long term sobering or something like that, where somebody's coming in DUI, they got to be processed anyway, because that's a criminal charge. Related to that, where I think that facility would probably have more of an impact on people who are not necessarily in secure custody. Because they have other substance abuse challenges that they might be, you know, out front of this building when we walk out and are just constantly there. And so that'd be, I don't think it's going to have a major influence on the population of the the facility.
Correct.
Based based on our analysis so far.
And that was the answer I was looking for is.
And we don't do just just sobering.
Otis from Mayberry is not going to be.
I'm an Orkierlindian, so I can make fun of
You are running out of an audience soon that that knows what that means, I love it.
I remember Otis.
So looking at the secure bed baseline projection, this chart on the screen here, the two red bars are historic populations from 2015 and 2020. And the blue bars are the projected average daily population. The 2024 population was 423. The 30 year projected need for population is 709. When you add that peaking in classification, you get up to 938 beds in 2055, which is about 350 beds more than you currently have available today. Base base, obviously, we talked about already with some of the closures and and the forced releases, the current jail is is at capacity now already. If everybody who's supposed to be there would be there.
This is using which methods? I mean, you described, you ran 10 different methods, multiple different approaches to those methods. Is this the sort of conclusion of all of those or what is what is this the projection?
This is an averaging of 11 or the 11 projection models. When we looked at those models
Or of the 11?
Or of the 11 were only applicable.
You thought they were more representative?
More representative. The ones that were not used were ones that went close to zero negative in 30 years. They were just some real outliers because that population has ebb and flow so much over the last 10 years. That's the seven models not used were considerable outliers that would that would not be reasonable to use as part of this.
I'm just going to make a comment that since we're talking about this now, I I would strongly prefer that two fairly significant events that occurred in our area, one being COVID, I mean, that occurred everywhere. But I I would prefer that the modeling be somehow completely disregarding of COVID and measure 110. I'd much rather feel like the the analysis, I I think those are both anomalies that belong not in our analysis.
Skewing the results.
I I I mean, to your point, I I don't know where to put that in. I don't even know if it would, maybe the four of the 11 you've picked don't aren't skewed by that significantly. But I'm just telling you intellectually, I'd like to know what that number in 2055 is, assuming COVID and measure 110 had no impact.
We have that as an alternative.
Okay, I'll shut up.
Well, I appreciate those two factors, but there are also two other major factors. One is that we've had funding, operational funding challenges the whole time that we've been on the commission. But also forced releases have occurred every single week since at least 2015. So I'm trying to figure out if as we move forward, what do we want as a working assumption with regard to forced release?
You you guys said you counted those like they were not released, right?
Correct, we incorporated them back into the baseline projection model, the historic data from
Because they should have been.
24 because they should have been.
Right, so on this slide, they're included then?
Correct.
Okay.
And then
So this slide, this slide they
They're projected out.
Okay. Okay, good. I think when there will be presentations that remind us of working assumptions. And so the ones where we're noting, you know, if if we so choose to disregard a COVID event, to disregard the measure 110 blip that forced releases are encountered and represents or makes an assumption that we can be at full operational capacity so that we're focused on facility would be helpful.
And and do the forced releases represent the lack of funding?
In, you know, I
Lack of capacity. Well, but the reason I'm asking the question is I'm reverse looking at what are the effects of lack of funding? So I'm just
It was originally lack of capacity and it's while we've been on that it's the citing of the reasons is capacity and operation. It may have been operational capacity problems in the past, but not to the degree that we've experienced since 2019.
Well, and I don't mind sharing that as of today, the number of forced releases for this year has already exceeded the entire number for 2024.
Yeah, we've we've had that for years, unfortunately. Could we go back to your comment? I think I think what I'm hearing too is there's funding and then there's the staffing and the operational needs to run the jail.
That's what I call operations.
Okay.
Because it's cash.
Yeah, I guess.
Building capacity.
And no amount of money would necessarily be able to fix the staffing.
Right, well, you could.
So for the facility numbers that we're talking about, operational dollars are not a factor. This is all about capacity.
Yeah, what's the demand?
Capacity.
What what do criminal justice systems says you need to have in your facility basically is what it's looking at.
Yep.
At some point, I'm also wondering, this is just beds, so program space is something for the future as well.
Yep.
Okay.
That's that's
I'm very
Laurel, talk a little bit about that. Commissioner Snyder, to to go on your your last question and and comment here, we did look at alternative scenarios, four different scenarios. You'll see here, the first one was a modified historic data set from 2015 to 2019.
So that would sort of ignore both COVID and
Yep, ignore COVID with that and and measure 110 and anything else that happened from reduction in capacity over the last couple of years with that. The numbering here is a little off because alternative two is actually for community correction center. So that we're talking about secure confinement here. Other alternative reentry program reduces sentence population by 10%. That was something that the working committee agreed upon as something that might be reasonable in the future. Or could have had an impact here recently. Alternative four is pretrial diversion participation increased by 5, 10 and 15%. These are those scenarios where if you could pick out a few more, that could go to a different program in the future. We wanted to look at what that impact would be. And then the last alternative, as I mentioned earlier, was a site and loop. That data, we had some different data sets. It was some projections upon projections, not the greatest data set, but looking at a 15% factor to add to the pretrial population to account for more arrests being booked into the facility instead of giving a citation, release on their own recognizance to report, as we discussed being a challenge earlier with that. And so looking at each of these And so looking at, uh, each of these scenarios for best base summary. Uh, Commissioner Snyder, I think that the number that you're looking for here, uh, would be alternate number one to twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen baseline projections. Uh, based on that and the projections that were ran, I think we were able to get a couple more projection models, uh, to be used there. It increases the total number of beds from baseline by forty in twenty fifty-five. So that impact to the number of beds is forty percent, about five percent or so. Are in theory, one, about approximately one additional housing unit, uh, would be needed based on that scenario. Uh, alternatives three and four, uh, were reductions in populations. And as you can see, anywhere from twenty-one to ninety-six less beds, uh, depending on, um, the scenario with that. So that could be minor reduction in number of beds are significant up to potentially two housing units at ninety-six beds. Uh, the site and blue alternative, um, with the increased number of people, individuals, adults in custody, rest being booked at the facility and housing. It could increase the number of beds by ninety-six. So it's some different scenarios here, uh, looking at this. Uh, we believe the baseline, uh, best base projection scenario is the most likely an ideal scenario because it does have ten years of data. And it does have some different impacts where population was lower, but it increased, uh, with that. But obviously, this is a policy decision, uh, looking at future facility needs, what the commission wanna, would wanna look at. Uh, with that, ultimately, when you start looking at a new facility and what you have and the number of beds. That's gonna come to a, a whole number, a round number based on the design of the facility with that and how you do it. Housing units are created in. I don't wanna say stackable blocks, but you wanna have consistency in the numbers with that. And so, uh, it could be rounded up a little bit or slightly down.
Well, towards that end. Housing unit, okay? Right now, we call them pods, and there's. What's the practical number of beds?
Oh, right now?
Yes.
Probably three fifty?
No, how many beds in a pod?
And how many per pod? Oh, anywhere, general population sixty-four.
Okay, so. That's our current model, general model. With. You being the expert and where things are at nationally and trends now, what kind of housing unit size are folks? Generally using?
Uh, typically smaller. I do have a slide on this a little bit later that I would like to, to, to talk a little bit about to, to really meet the, the need for this.
Okay, terrific.
Perfect.
At this stage of the game, I'm really trying to make sure I understand what are the best practices.
On the prior slide, the twenty fifty-five projection, does that include the twenty percent sort of extra factors or?
This is for, this is total number of beds.
Including that.
And when you look at this, it, when we're projecting out thirty years. Do, do you look at the effect of economic trends, that type of thing as well? I mean, I'm just curious, uh, I know that that's, uh, is, is there any, is there any tie here?
Not really specifically to that, um, because we're looking at your population and the ec, it, the economic trends of the last ten years. Have influenced your, your population, whether it's a secure bed or community correction. So we have to take that out because over thirty years, you're gonna have recession, you're gonna have, uh, economic boom times. Uh, you're gonna have different things. It's, I mean, in twenty nineteen, nobody would predict the COVID nineteen pandemic. And how that disrupted everything and who knows what else could happen. And the pendulum swings politically now so broad, you know, measure one-ten. Decriminalize so much and that pendulum swung back last year to the opposite of that. So, um, this is hard to really have that agitate ball.
And. We've always had poverty. It's hard to project out what a rate of poverty is gonna be ten years out, twenty years out, thirty years out. But, you know, as a betting person, there's always gonna be something.
Who does? That's how she makes all.
We rent it out.
Rent it out. All right.
It'll pay for your contract.
So we're about halfway through time and about halfway through the material, but I think this is foundational. Uh, and so we wanna go through all information today. Thank you.
To transitioning to community correction, uh, center, uh, projected with this. As we talked about for the reduced bed capacities impacting historic average daily population, particularly for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four. It sounds like since we drafted this report, there's been some funding cuts and that has been influenced even more heavily. Uh, moving forward, uh, with that one seventy-two capacity with that. Uh, the baseline model for community corrections does not account for any secure bed projection scenarios. It is assuming status quo, um, based on the individuals that can jump over, uh, to that based on their eligibility and requirements with that.
I can't say that I understand that. Baseline model does not account for any secure bed projection scenarios.
What that basically means is. Irrespective of what the population is in the jail.
Yeah.
Uh, they're diverting as many people out to the community correction centers as feasible based on whether they're, what the judges say. Uh, where they have to be housed or other criteria that the sheriff's office and the jail is looking at. They're, they're diverting as many individuals as they can now.
Okay.
To that and it's assumed that that will continue, uh, so irrespective of the jail population is five hundred. A thousand or three thousand.
Okay.
Uh, it's gonna, they're gonna kick them out as quickly as they can over to community corrections.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, continue status quo on intake eligibility requirements for participation in community corrections. Uh, there's pretty good requirements now and, and, uh, the allow a lot of, a lot of eligible individuals with that. And for community corrections, because they do not have, uh, the, the arresting population that can jump up and down. We only use a ten percent P K D classification factor here because the control of individuals who are eligible and you can move to that facility. Uh, is more policy decision versus what law enforcement activities are going on out there, uh, today and whatever.
More factors you can control.
Yeah. You can control the flow of individuals to that facility, generally speaking.
Thank you.
So, uh, this, uh, chart here, again, the red is historic, um, average daily population you see is around two hundred in twenty fifteen. Sixty-five or seventy in twenty twenty. Uh, projected population, uh, goes up to two hundred and twenty-nine average daily population with the best basis of two hundred and fifty-two. Uh, capacity. Uh, the last bullet point here is this thing, uh, C C C capacity exceeded in twenty fifty with the number of beds that they have. Obviously, the operating capacity now, um, is, is much lower than that, but the number of beds that can be there. Um, can continue to serve the population it needs for the foreseeable future. So really no, uh, changes to the community correction center in terms of number of beds, uh, that are needed there. I know there's been some facility projects over the last couple of years that have, uh, remodeled that facility and upgraded it.
This model makes less sense to me just from an intuit, like intuitive perspective. I mean, help me understand why, again, assume COVID's not a thing. How, how do you go from what's at, what's the data in twenty fifteen? To the projection? In twenty twenty-five or twenty thirty, like, h- help me with, uh, what is driving this? Cuz it doesn't, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
On, on the surface, it does not.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
In twenty fifteen, when you look at the number of individuals involved in the criminal justice system. Uh, the philosophy there was more, I'm gonna say basically lock them up, let's have them in the jail. Uh, there is not as many diversion programs, there is not as many treatment programs out there, uh, within the community. Uh, so there were more individuals within the jail, uh, that were probably eligible to be in a community correction. Uh, that paradigm has shifted over the last decade, um, where the judicial system and policy decisions by the judges. At the state and the sheriff's office is try to divert as many people out. So you have less people who are involved in a criminal justice system who are eligible, uh, to be in a community correction bed. Um, where essentially where in twenty fifteen, they've been a community correction bed, now in twenty twenty-five, they're out.
They're in the.
In a treatment program, they're a community.
In a diversion program.
Diversion program or site release or whatever it might be. So that's, that's.
That's the why.
That's the why.
Cuz that's a big.
It's a big difference.
Yeah.
But I have a different issue. We have a community correction center. The capital facility that right now we have lower than the maximum bed capacity because of maintenance repair. It's operating at lower than capacity because of an operational dollar problem, right? And personnel, blah, blah, blah. This slide seems to be telling me that. If we take the dollar operational and maintenance closure needs aside. That the size of facility, am I correct in understanding this is telling me that? The size of the facility is adequate until twenty fifty because that seems counterintuitive for me.
The facility is, is adequately sized, uh, for the population that should be there. Unfortunately, due to operational challenges, whether facility or funding. Um, is artificially, the number of people who are spending the night in that facility and under that supervision is artificially deflated. Uh, lowered because of some of these other, I'm gonna say, policy decisions, funding decisions, our facility. Uh, the repair occurrences have decreased the population that is there.
So earlier, I heard a number, maybe I misunderstood the nature of the number, but I heard a hundred and sixty-seven beds. Now we have to, does that include the ten percent peaking, so minus ten percent?
Yeah, Chair Harrington, that one sixty-seven number is just completely state funding, that we had to reduce our capacity. Once this is, once the facility is fixed and working, the maximum amount of beds would be one sixty-seven. And then, yes, we would drop that the ten percent for the.
The question I asked earlier or wanted to walk away from earlier was how many beds? At the community correction center irrespective of state funding.
Hundred and fifteen, sorry about that, yes, two fifteen.
So two fifteen and five hundred, got it.
And this analysis says we really only need to be operating a hundred and twenty-five. In twenty twenty-five. So correct or roughly?
Yeah.
One twenty-five?
Roughly, yeah, I think that's about one, one twenty-five, one thirty right now.
I'd like to add that an additional impact to the community corrections beds is that, uh, in reference, something I talked about earlier. In that the adult in custody that we're serving is, um, suffering from several dual diagnosis issues. And they, and we are only lodging in our jail, the people that must be in custody. And so those are not the people that will be eligible to transition over to the community correction center. And so we are not able to utilize the beds that they even have available to the degree that we did, uh, twenty fifteen and before.
They're not appropriate.
They're not appropriate. It's not, it would not be safe.
Yeah, the complexity of the A I C is why they're in there.
I just didn't wanna lose sight of that cuz that's.
That were released. They the ones that were released.
Well, not even relief, the, those are precisely the ones you're describing that are no longer in institutional. Like they're being diverted before they're.
Or they can't be out of a secure bed.
Right. Thank you for helping.
Uh, so challenges and potential solutions, Chair Harrington, to get back to one of the questions you previously asked, uh, here. There are several current jail facility challenges. Uh, one of those is the housing pods or housing units. Are, are designed for a lower classification levels. When this facility was built twenty, thirty years ago. As we talked earlier, the demographics of the A I C population is much, was much different than more misdemeanor charges. Less, uh, mental health and mental illness, substance abuse challenges, uh, where they're, they're back then. The common practice was more dormitory, uh, style beds, uh, larger, you know, double bunk set cells. Where now with the demographic and the population that is being served for A I C. It requires more, uh, single person or even up to, to double bunking, um, cells, uh, with that, the. Very few facilities, uh, that are being county jails that have been built recently with dormitory style beds, which is a six. Forty-eight, fifty-six, sixty-four, even seventy-two bed, open dorm, barracks style, uh, with no individual cells. Able to, um, lock it down and control, uh, movement within.
That's just out.
Just out, yeah, you've sixty-four people and, and.
Doesn't meet, doesn't meet the current reality.
It doesn't meet the classification needs and current reality of the individuals that you have. Somebody's having a, a mental episode. Uh, obviously, you can't have them out in the, amongst the, you know, sixty-three, uh, their closest friends. Uh, with that, it creates some challenges, uh, with that from a safety issue for themselves, for other A I Cs and certainly staff. And so, and that's some challenges, uh, question that you had, uh, Chair Harrington, uh, related to the size of a housing pod. Uh, move, what we're seeing now, uh, is best practice is smaller units. Um, units that are maybe subdivisible. Uh, with some breakout spaces that have multiple mini day rooms, um, which are areas outside of the individual cell. Uh, that is there where you can break it down, where you can maybe continue to keep one deputy or officer, uh, for a housing unit. Um, but there are multiple subsections within a housing unit, uh, that are maybe for a twelve, sixteen bed. Where you could subdivide that population and to be able to house from a classification level, but also a safety level. Um, because one thing that is very important to stabilize much of the population in the facility is, um, out of cell time. Uh, where maybe they can interact, but can interact with. Twenty-four or thirty-two individuals, uh, around them, but they can be with one or two one-on-one conversations with other individuals. So if you have a housing pod, uh, that has some flexibility, some smaller day rooms that can be, um, broken down into smaller segments. Uh, it serves a population, gets them out of their cells, it keeps them safer. Uh, you can have more programming space in a modern design facility where that program can be had there. Where you're not having to bring them out into a larger area to get them to another room or move that A I C throughout the facility. So, um, that's some of the challenges. Uh, the next slide will have a little bit more also recommendations with that. Your housing pods are a little, uh, too large, uh, and it can, right now, limited flexibility for classification and treatment and services and programming needs. Uh, with that population that's currently within your facility. Uh, future jail, uh, facility considerations when you're moving forward, looking at renovation, potential expansion of the facility. Is to reduce the housing pod size and incorporate subunits where possible, as we talked about. Uh, the, the mo, the thinking now, uh, is generally around a forty-eight bed unit, uh, which is. Lower than sixty-four bed unit that's in the current facility for the general, uh, housing population areas with that.
That would only be forty-eight if you had the sub, if you had it subdivitable or?
Uh, it's some of that. The next slide is gonna talk a little bit about how, uh, potential breakdown of the facility with that. Uh, a lot of that is some smaller units, you know, sixteen bed, maybe twenty-four beds, subunits within a larger housing unit. And, uh, also to transition to single and double occupancy cells only with that, based on the demographics and the needs. Within the facility itself.
Before you go into this slide. I may have misunderstood something from the last jail inspection tour. So we have some pods that have a sleeping shelf down here and a sleeping shelf up there. But because in my layperson's brain, because of operational safety needs. We're not using that, I don't, I don't dare call it double bunk, but a double capacity room. They're all being utilized, if I'm correct, in my memory, single occupancy use.
We, we did stop, uh, using both bunks in that space. Primarily because operationally, again, the adult in custody coming in wasn't suitable. To have a roommate, and so we wanted, especially during COVID, we wanted to at least use those spaces. So we were just putting one person in there.
Okay.
And best practices is to go away from that as much as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Most modern design facilities, if they're, they're two-person cells, uh, they do not have what we would traditionally call a bunk situation. With one bed over another bed from a safety reasons. Um, also, a, a life safety issue is not somebody rolling out, but potential suicide, trying to hang themselves. Uh, the trend is to go to a more of a, I'm gonna call it a floor-mounted bed. Uh, that is, that is low, that's only maybe a, a foot off, that's built in often concrete or some modular form. That goes in with mattress on top of it. So, believe you were, you had a question?
Um, yeah, I have a question for the sheriff, um. So the, I, that housing unit, if you're not using the double, um, to double beds. Does that still equate to sixty-four bed, sixty-four then? Or are you really utilizing? Or are you really utilizing, like, I'm trying to figure out if you're actually close to the 48 beds, even though the, the, the housing unit is designed for, to house 64?
We are closer now, some of our general population housing units are capped at 60. Pod one and pod two have 64, and then some of them are smaller yet, like the medical observation unit. And I know that there are some housing units where there are two people assigned to cells. But that is the exception right now, rather than the rule, because we just don't have enough people that are at capacity or that have the, that are suitable, actually, to have a roommate. And so it kind of goes back and forth, but we typically, in a regular general population where we have either 64 or 60, they are not full by any stretch of the imagination because of that.
And then the second question I have is the middle bullet point, ideal housing unit size is 48. I assume that's what you're recommending, some things for this board to consider in the county. Have you looked at the previous plans to build the current jail? And could you help us sort of understand from your perspective what their, why did the previous people recommended 64? And because I'm, I didn't look at the previous report. But I'm also being sensitive to not yucking somebody's yum back in the day. So could you help us in like?
Deconstructing what the decisions made 30, 40 years ago?
No, no, I'm just asking the subject matter experts, just help us.
It was back in the 90s, 64-bed was pretty common, even up to 72 beds was pretty common for a housing unit size back then. There was some language, I believe, from the American Correctional Association. Back then, a lot of their standards, even the standards that they have today, is based on a 64-bed or even a 72-bed housing unit. So that was common approaches in the late 80s and early 90s, going to the direct supervision model, which is what your facility is designed, which that means the officer or deputy was stationed within the housing unit to have those conversations with the AICs there to understand and have a temperature check. That was a dynamic shift in the 80s, going from an indirect supervision model to put the deputy within the housing unit. So 64-bed was pretty common up until about the last decade or so, with many, many jail designs that, that were there. I've got one client now who has a 112-bed facility for the housing units that is direct supervision, and it's certainly not working with the population that they have. They even have one unit that is a female unit that's 144 beds. So it's, it, it, those, yeah, the sheriff over here has got a strong reaction and rightfully so with that. It creates some operational challenges.
So how do I make sure, so there's the 1980s, 1990s model? And there's current practices. How do I make sure we're at least going with a trend that will serve us well out to 2055? Versus we're at the tail, the very tail end of a new trend? So we're going to be the last to build using what in five years' time will be thought of as a prehistoric model?
Well, I think if, I think if you go towards the, the, the subunit, the, the viable flexible housing unit, that's going to best serve any pop, population that you have for your adults in custody. Whether or not that they have the needs when you can subdivide, it makes it safer for the adult in custody, it makes it safer for staff, it gives you more flexibility and options for treatment and programming and to serve the AIC population in the criminal justice system.
Your document may already have this in the words in black and white, but I haven't absorbed it all. I'm going to have to read it.
There's a lot to take in, there's.
So into a next phase of planning, I'm going to need that playback of what our working assumptions are. What are we aiming for?
And I, and I think, well, I'll talk a little bit about that in a few minutes. When, when I looked at the breaking down your population here in a 48-bed unit, this is what we would recommend, but it's certainly something that to keep in mind. This gives you some optimal flex, flexibility in your design and the, with this. This totals 896 beds, which is slightly more than the 2015 to 2019 baseline model. With that, we went with that here based on the number of units and beds and looking at potential configuration scenarios to maximize on what it was. It's hard to have an odd number within a facility like this because you double stack housing units oftentimes with that. So you need to have some of that flexibility, you need to have pairs oftentimes when you get to the design phase. While I'm not an architect, but looking at that, it, it pencils out to 896 beds with the 48-bed housing units here. As you can see, there's a heavy emphasis on maximum security, classification, less so on minimal, medium. Segregation is another major, major housing unit component here with 96 beds, medical beds. Mental health is 128 beds with that, and those are single cells, detox, individuals who are detoxing off something on the street or going through a substance abuse program to get off of that. And then a few transition programming beds, you want to have some step-down beds for those individuals who are higher classification from mental health or substance abuse. You want to transition program out back to society. And so you need to have some step-down bed space as the most intensive treatment to less intensive treatment to almost, hey, give them a little bit more freedom to show that they're really prepared to go back out to the community.
And I, I read in your, so go ahead, Sheriff. I read in your report, there was this, I thought you were recommending 709 capacity for jail in 2050.
Think that might have been the 80 average daily population, so.
That's a pretty big jump from 709 to 896, but.
Yeah, can we talk a little bit more about how we've gone from the scenario bed space summary with numbers as low as, well, in the 700s? All, all, you've got baseline in 2055 is 851 to 946. And how did you come up with a number then on this slide of 896? I'm thinking, if I don't want commissioners swearing about this commission's working number, I'm thinking, take the 946, but have a base minimum of, I don't know, why shouldn't, help me understand why I should be comfortable with 851, eight whatever it is versus 947?
There's been some, I mean, you probably are aware, some significant criticism from some that the number is too small.
Yeah.
Sure there are.
So.
Twenty years worth of criticism that it's too small.
So as you're, as you're responding to that, work that into your response.
The, the baseline projection was 851 beds, is, is what we have on this slide here. On the alternate, alternate scenario for 2015 to 2019 baseline was, was 891. With that, the 709 number that you references the average daily population, so that is the number of individuals without the peaking classification factor. So you add that 20% factor in there, that's how we got to the 851, additional 142 beds with that. So that's, that's the difference in those two numbers that you reference with that. On the eight, the 896 number is, is based on an even number of housing pods or housing units based on the 48-bed count. On with that, that gave a total of, I'll have it in front of me here, but it gave a, think of, the way it's broke down, it gave 48 different units, but that's different sizes based on a combination of 48-bed units, so.
So that's what got us to 96?
Yeah, that's, that's six.
Yes, they have to be multiples of 48.
Yeah, multiple of 48 with that. And, and that's, is it even, even pod unit, because you've got to have multiples of 48. So that gets you to, I believe, I might have to drop a blank right now, but it gives an equal number of beds as you can, if you were to continue to expand the current jail as is, you've got that long corridor and ability to put housing units on the side to go down, continue to expansion with that. So that's why it's 896 total number with that. Obviously, when you start looking at policy decisions, you start looking at future facility needs, you start looking at design, that number could change based on architectural design and what can fit on the site and what ability that you have from a variety of engineering and design perspectives with that and how you maybe are able or not able to renovate the existing facility to give you more of that flexibility. So the ultimate number, total number of beds that you will have will be heavily impacted by the renovation capability within your existing facility and how you may be able to expand out in the future with the existing infrastructure and obviously value engineering down the line. When you start looking at these costs, it can be quite extensive and the funding may or may not be available in the future.
So what, thank you for this conversation. What it has helped me accept is, I don't, as just one of five, I don't want to pick a number lower than 851 ever, right? If I was to serve all the way to 2055.
A lot of real life.
I am pretty comfortable with the fact that 896 is very close to 891, okay? But, and I appreciate that on this slide you've talked about variety of beds and solution. I'm still having a really hard time with double bed, double cell being used on medium and maximum.
I was going to actually mention, if you didn't mind, that we can't actually double bunk maximum security adults in custody. We, we cannot.
Okay, so I would say from this work session today, we're going to need to have another pass-through and we're going to need to have another board conversation to get to a working set. Because what I'm doing is, for me, there's an absolute base minimum number. And then you look into practical operational needs, program needs, mixing. So we have to figure out in the future how we, how we define must-have assumptions so that they don't get design engineered out. So I'm trying to leverage what, what you've taught us in terms of good facility planning model. But I think we need another touch point to memorial, get to a point where we're able to memorialize that through a board step of memorializing for future boards.
There's an element here to me about planning for the future and knowing that things are unpredictable and that it's much cheaper to build extra capacity when you're building it than to decide, oh no, we underbuilt it 10 or 12 years from now, and trying to figure out how to do another project. And so to me, that's an element as well. If I'm going to make a mistake, I want to make it on the, on the higher end, not on the lower end. I mean, I don't want to overbuild what we need, but I'd much rather, if I have to make a choice, I'd rather make an overbuild. For one, there's a lot of variable costs that we can, you know, we don't need to operate parts of the jail, then we don't need to operate them and the variable cost goes away. Or it can potentially be used with partner organizations in a way that makes sense. I mean, there's lots of options there, but under, under no circumstances do I want to be having a conversation about any decision that we might be undersizing this.
Question, I would love to share with you that that's exactly what we did with our current facility. It was designed with 572 beds and roughly a week after we moved in, we were at full capacity and immediately.
Let's learn from that.
Thank you, and so I'm celebrating your point and saying, may we please not do that again?
I think the other thing that we need to be thinking about as we move forward is what do our, what do our municipalities expect from us as well? You know, I think that that's, it's our, it's ultimately our responsibility, I understand that. But I think engaging in this conversation forward is important. Let's keep going.
That's all that I have, I'm going to turn it over to Laurel.
So this, we have an updated version of this.
It is slightly modified, I think we can talk through the difference. If I remember, the next slide is going to be the funny one, but anyway, here we go. The, this is the original timeline that we presented to this board a few times by now. It was a very aggressive timeline when we first developed it and everyone acknowledged that. With your support, we have taken a few deep breaths to slow down and have the kind of conversations that we just had today, which will inform a better project in the end. I think as we're all really aware, this isn't something that we're going to do very often. And so we want to make sure that we get it right and rushing through these early pre-design and planning conversations isn't going to be to our benefit. So the first thing that you'll notice is that Phase Two has moved into fiscal year 26. I have, the next slide will go into a little more detail about what we'll, what activities will be happening in Phase Two. I just want to also call out that Matrix has been a really great partner to us in this time period. And as Erin mentioned, that delay is largely attributed to staff capacity on the county side and how can we provide meaningful feedback on the information that they've provided to us.
Laurel?
Yes.
Given the definition of Phase Two in hiring a consultant for design, I don't know how my colleagues feel, but as one of five, I'm not ready to adopt a memorialized target.
I love that.
And so I don't feel comfortable, Ms. Angie, in you and your staff hiring a consultant for design until we do that step. It's not because of you, it's because I want to make sure we're targeting well with assumptions that, you know, program space is a TBD, but here's a minimum or something. Some other working assumptions. And also, you've, you've brought in Matrix as an expert analyst in this space. And there's been a lim, my word, limited working group. But you haven't necessarily, I don't know if you've been able to expand the set so that like chiefs, police chiefs in cities feel like, oh yeah, these are credible numbers based upon what I, as a subject matter expert chief, see through population projections out to 2055, where the, the trends for judicial, what judges do, right, that magic. Prosecutors tend to want to prosecute as many people as there's operational time and hours to do. But nonetheless, I think we need to be mindful of what a court model will be. Someday we will have a big, someday with everything crossed, we will have a bigger courtroom capacity, right? So another TBD for me is, what about booking space? What is our working assumption on that? I already mentioned program space, but we also have courtrooms in the law enforcement center. And I don't know if building more jail. And I don't know if building more jail capacity means that. Instead of having courtrooms in the jail, we need to have the, I don't know, the whatever label, the appropriate label is for the LEC courtroom. So, um. As one of five. Moving forward in fiscal twenty-six. I, I am inviting you guys coming back with working model assumptions. Anyway, I, I'm belaboring my, I apologize.
The point that the chair just made, you know, we're talking about the courthouse too. There's need for, or there's benefit to adjacency. Is the assumption the courthouse gets rebuilt where it currently is? Is, no. Okay, so I mean, that, sorry, maybe I see you all smiling, but.
No, you're right.
Oh, yeah.
We're just, we finally got the state local.
Yeah.
It's like there could be consideration.
Yes.
Or either co-location or at least secure.
It's in your packet, it's not showing on the screen, but we did develop a kind of a box that talks about just this, this timeline, being very aware of this new project that we know will happen, the courthouse.
So we know we want adjacency. To be smart about that.
And if we're smiling, I'm smiling. I won't speak for everybody. I'm smiling because I think we're really aligned in this. Um, what has happened is that our timeline has evolved, it has softened. And we are ending up with a kind of a perfect storm for bringing these two projects online together because they do have so much intersection. Like I've heard several references to that. Um, in this presentation, and so I think that, um, it's working out better than we could have. And you're talking about the courthouse and the jail. Correct, exactly. So when we get to the next slide, which I think is an older version of it, we'll kind of talk through your concerns, Chair, about committing to design before we've done. A lot of the decision, decision-making.
I think I want you to insert a new bullet at the top.
Okay.
Okay.
But I don't want to leave this yet.
Yes.
Okay, just, I'm looking at, um, fiscal year twenty-seven. We'll have the ESP, ESPD levy. And then I assume the bullet for ballot measure is how we will pay for the jail. And in the meantime, if you go back to twenty-six, what we are going to be looking at is what are, how are we looking at increasing our revenues? And I, I, I'm, I'm seeing the intersection of all of these things and, uh, expressing. A little just funding concerns. I mean, this is nothing new and, and, but at the same time. I think that when we look at these things, we have to remember what the big picture is as well as what we're doing here.
So the first reason that it, that went with that. The financing bond measure.
Right, yeah. And that, I, so that is why the delay has worked in our favor because now we're gonna be able to align better with the funding. Um, efforts and, and the courthouse planning. So those. I think are the key points I wanted to touch on in this slide and then Erin was gonna speak a little more detail to the.
Yeah, really just the levy blocks at the bottom, as you noted, the public safety local option levy, the ESPD levy, that's just to keep that on your radar as we time everything out. That, to your point, we have to kind of be aware of.
Well, and those other potential, um, correct, uh, funding models we look at.
Yep, we have to fit in there as well. Yeah, so we're just trying to fit everything in, but we'll be evolving this timeline.
You heard that loud and clear last night.
Yep, yeah.
Yes, we did.
So are we ready to move on to the next one or are there more comments or questions? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so this slide kind of talks about, uh, the body of phase two and I want to just. Um, redefine a few of the things as they exist on this, uh, this version of the slide. Um, I want to emphasize that we are going to be going out to a competitive solicitation to bring on a design firm that will help us with these next steps. The first thing they're gonna do is actually help with the programming, so that will be where they sit and talk with all of the stakeholders that you mentioned. That are listed in the overview slide of the inputs and the outputs.
We have to be careful, we're using programming for two different terms.
It's possible.
Definitely, because it means something drastically different. Facility.
Space programming. I just got a friend whisper to my ear. Yeah, is that helpful? Is the space?
We'll keep working on it.
Definitely differentiates it from program programming.
Yes.
Well, and space programming is where we get to the question.
Thank you, that helped me.
Yeah, the questions about like, are we gonna have bigger booking? Are we gonna have, uh, more helpful services within the jail? Like those are, that, how do we accommodate that with the space? So first will come the. Programming prime, I guess we'll call it, I don't know. And then secondly, the designers. Will take those decisions and turn them into space-related decisions. Does that?
Yeah, the word programming's not gonna work for me. We need to reserve programming for the operational programming that happens.
Okay.
In the jail and the community corrections center. I think what I'm getting out of it is. The current work that has been done is utilizing this. Expert, data expert in forecasting and a limited work group.
Yes.
And we need to expand that work group.
Yes.
The partner stakeholders, which I'm cringing on the word partners because in the end. The word partners needs to be utilized when we have any sort of engagement with. City mayor, city councils. Community members, folks who were not in the expert domain of. Building and operating a public safety and justice facility, right? Whereas the kind of folks that I'm thinking need to be in the expanded work set are. You know, everybody in the sheriff's office, right? Everybody in community corrections. But all the people who. The defense attorneys, right? How do they serve their adults who are housed in the jail, right? Those parties. We want them, them involved.
And it, would it be easier to refer to those people specifically as stakeholders and then every, those other?
Perhaps, perhaps, but I.
To distinguish them, but you're right.
We, we've got a document vocabulary.
Yep. We can define terms.
I like the programming part, at least the space program. I mean, that's the official words that architecture firms use for this. So that's probably not gonna be eliminated completely if we're doing RFPs, et cetera, right? I mean, that's just not realistic. I wouldn't know what we're talking about.
I'm fine if that's a term you need to define.
Yes, we'll just define it and make sure that we're using it separately and.
And I am correct that that's the term they use.
It is the term, correct, yes, it is the term. And what, I think that the work that Erin has done and. Uh, the statistics and the numbers that they have brought to us today are kind of defining what we will face. And then this next step. The space programming, the operational decisions that the sheriff's office will make in that next phase, we'll talk about how. Are we gonna meet that need? And that, that could change. Um, that's one of the ways that the bed numbers may change. That's one of the ways that. Um, we'll find out what our true costs are gonna be. What are the, um, capabilities on our current site?
Okay, you're going way faster than I can absorb today because before you issue. Of an RF, uh, a contract for. This work.
Pre-design.
Mm-hmm. I need us to. Memorialize our working. Planning model.
Okay.
So I need that first bullet to be added.
Okay.
I don't know if it goes before competitive solicitation, but it needs to be in there before. Firm is brought in and starting any conceptual design, site review, cost estimating.
That's the big, like, kind of big picture decision.
Yeah, we need to memorialize, this is what. A first, what we're aiming for. Now, all you architects, program specialists, defense attorneys. You go work with this design firm and so forth to go do that stuff that you have up here.
Sure. So I will add that, um, we will do the definition of terms so that we're able to keep pace, um.
And you're, you're just a player. No, no, I'm trying to articulate this bullet, this memorializing.
Yeah.
It's the result of your taking today's discussion and refining our information and documenting the working assumptions that we've highlighted here. Real clear on that? Is the board comfortable with our doing that step?
I'm comfortable in the people that are in front of me. And that's, that's important.
I think that step makes sense to me because otherwise you don't know what you want being, like, to me.
It's a yes, no question. Do you want to support our doing that step or are you against that?
I'm a supporter.
Thank you. I, I thought I saw everybody either nodding their head now or.
I think that's critical to be able to say what it is that that next, that right now what's on the screen is the top bullet. What's gonna be done in that?
Yeah, it provides a lot more clarity.
Sure.
To the process, you're right.
So we will add that step and then once we have approval to move forward, we will, um. Reach out for a design firm. Uh, once we bring that person on board, they, we will be, uh, working hard to make sure that they have all the background information that they need so that they can. Evaluate, uh. Our next steps. Um, we're gonna bring them on board so they can do site visits. We need them to review existing conditions of the building and find out what's possible on that site location. Um, and we will need to make sure that they are partnering or touching base with the courthouse planning committee. Uh, so that, uh, those two projects are moving forward lockstep. And, uh, there will be a lot of deep dive conversations even, uh, continuing in that, uh, phase of the project to make sure that everybody's, um, input is considered. Uh, because it is more than just, uh, the people that are being housed in the jail. And throughout the process, we will be reviewing those results and findings, uh, and timeline, which is expected to shift, uh, with your board and. Incorporating that feedback into our process going forward. And then eventually, one day. When we're ready, we will prepare solicitation for the construction phase.
So on these next steps, Ms. Angie, I, um, I understand that. The prior adopted timeline needs to change. I'm having trouble waiting until after. We, we're inserting a new bullet one, so then there's bullet two, there's bullet three is contract and manage design team. Bullet four says review results and. I'm going with the modified one that says timeline with your board. I need a new.
Yes.
Timeline either with bullet one or bullet two. And I don't know what year, if that's gonna be in calendar year twenty-five or calendar year twenty-six.
So what I'm hearing in the discussion from your board today is a desire for, um, this team to come back and just with a summary of, uh, today's, um, discussion, some updated slides. And even providing a bit more detail on some of the slides, especially what the clear next steps are. Um, which can include, um, then, um, your board memorializing it. You may want to consider if you want to just do that by thumbs up. Um, in this meeting or if you want to actually add, um, add this on a consent agenda item, so it's clear on here's the next steps that we're moving to in the process.
Well, I, I'll comment on that. Um, in terms of the setup for, uh. Roundtable planning, so having a updated focus list through the, at least the end of twenty-six into calendar year twenty-seven. We want to help solidify by the October second roundtable. Tells me that the first, this new added bullet, it would be best if it could happen before the. Uh, before the October roundtable.
We can make that happen. I've seen all heads nod.
And as far as memorialization goes, I think we would be best served to. Actually have legislation that memorialize it. I, I don't know enough yet if it would serve us. Given questions that we've been receiving and grumblings about how, when, when will this ever be done? If we want to have a simple presentation as an action item versus on, on the consent agenda. Cause I think our, our city partners, our, our mayor, city councils. It might be best if we have a short presentation on what we're aiming for, uh, but. That can follow the October roundtable.
Okay, okay.
And I, I realize that the slide that's on the screen now is not intended to be all encompassing.
Right.
But it feels to me like one big bullet there that probably should be there is figure out how we're gonna pay for it.
Yep, funding, yep. It's on the focus list.
And for that funding on the previous timeline slide, which, um, Ms. Brown had spoke to ballot measure. We know we don't have capacity right now for funding and we're going to have the two problems. This isn't just a construction problem. This will be an operation problem, so both sides are going to need to be solved, um, through this process. So ballot measure, I would.
Yeah, you're talking about the operating.
Of the jail, yep.
Yeah.
So there, there's actually two aspects.
Build it, then can't operate.
Correct, that's in our focus list right now.
So I, I heard, I heard you mention a courthouse planning committee. Do we have?
Does that exist?
Uh, that's, I said team.
Oh, I, okay.
And, and we do have a team, but we do not have a committee yet.
Okay.
Court, courthouse discussion will be coming back to your board in a future, um, work session. Just as a reminder, we just, uh, received notice of the planning.
I understand that. I just, early days, yeah, yeah, and I'm very pleased there's a team.
Yeah.
On their radar. Any other questions on next steps?
In a good discussion.
We.
Robust.
Crushed three bullets on the.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, thank you for your time.
I will share some of the surprises I had on this report. Um, I know when, um. I did interview, was it with you? I remember, okay.
I go for my colleagues.
Way back in twenty twenty-four.
There we go.
There we go. Um, I remember, you know. Expressing my desire to what I like to see this report include in terms of focus groups. Getting feedback on, uh, from the community and partners and. And as well as, I think, um, some of the topics that came up here today. I will say though, the surprise I had is I didn't see a robust, um. Sort of an outreach or focus group or getting some information from the community since this is gonna, something that's gonna impact. Um, Washington County moving forward, long before this board. Um, and I was also surprised to see a letter from our DA articulating some, uh. Sending us a letter, uh, some of the concerns we had. And then I went back and read the report and there are multiple areas that is categorized as a criminal justice sort of, uh. I forget the framing of it, but you get the gist of it. I think, uh, you wrote the report, so you know what I'm talking about here. So if, how do we? How do we really, one, I think we should have an opportunity to amend this report. To sort of really go back and see what improvements we can make to this report. And then two, how do we actually say criminal justice system if the DA hasn't contributed? So that's the thing I was, uh, when I was doing my homework, um, sort of reconciling the two. Um, and also if you can shed light, um, why the district attorney wasn't moved in on that to get feedback.
Um, we did meet with multiple criminal justice partners early on in this project when we had the interview with you. Uh, we did meet with representatives from the district attorney's office. I do not believe the district attorney itself was included in that. I think it might have been. Yeah, I think he was, he was out of the country. I think he was. He was out of the country and there were a couple of representatives from his office that had an opportunity. And I do believe we did follow up with that outreach effort to include that. And we talked with several other, I interviewed multiple other partners, whether or not some some programming individuals, some social services individuals, public defender office was was included as well. And a few other criminal justice involved. Departments, teams were included with this. And and so they were included early on. Unfortunately, we did not bring this back, the findings to that group ourselves. I don't know what efforts the county, Ms. Calvert and Sheriff can maybe speak a little bit to how this was distributed to some of those other individuals and working groups that we had early on.
Well, and to that point, it was already mentioned earlier that there was the draft and we've had staff capacity issues or situations. I don't want to overuse the word issue. Not everything's an issue. It's just a reality. But we do know that we have some base information. We need need to complete the contract with Matrix and take a take a deep breath and note where we are and flesh out where do we go next? So I think your question does precipitate a real specific question of does the current draft document who? I mean, not I'm expecting, though I can't remember from my first read, enumerating the nature of stakeholders that were interviewed. But does it also enumerate the who for each of those categories? Or is that what should I'm expecting I could find it in one of the addendums?
The number and identification of who those individuals were is not included in that. We did not include that in the body of the report or even the appendix of the report.
Then the other surprise I had on this report is, you know, I was expecting more of, I think we're accustomed to seeing sort of when we're modeling sort of a best practice, other jurisdictions throughout the country who are doing this phenomenal job in this area. What are some comparable jurisdictions out there that we can say here where they are? Here where we are, and ideally, this is where we would aim mid, you know? So I was, I didn't see that in the report, the best practices. And then, in addition to that, what the question I ask for myself is, you know, I'm pretty sure there's jurisdictions out there that are trying to implement some programs to decrease number of people that are in custody or being funneled into the criminal justice system. What are those, you know, and how did they so I I don't know if I had a really a big expectation of this report, but I really enjoyed the conversation we had when we were doing the interview and sort of what do you foresee this report to be encompassing? So I had that this big dream of like this report would really be something that lives long before many of us here and or all of us that something that, you know, for posterity reasons, people could look back and say, wow, there were jurisdictions that were doing this, but none of that is is really focused on heavy on jail, jail, jail capacity. And I think there within the jail system, there are programs that are really helping people to be to be to return to the society as a very good citizens and also help them with their addiction. So I was really looking the the healing aspect of it too. And I didn't see that in the report. So there's just some feedback you can respond or not, but I just wanted to share with you the the excitement and the enjoyment I had in our initial interview. And then the surprise I had when I read this report to really, it was it didn't have that comprehensive holistic approach to what I was expecting this to come out.
It's certainly understandable and then we did have a good conversation. I think chapter four, the potential program programmatic impact does talk about some of the programs and what is going on here. And we do discuss where Washington County is for thinking and have a lot of that. Your your question about in relation to best practices comparison or comparing to other communities that wasn't involved, that wasn't an aspect in our scope of work. And so that was something that if if we shared that that was going to be in our do apologize for for thinking that would be in in that, but it was outside of our 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 scope of work. And when it comes to, I mean, that really chapter four, we try highlighting a lot of the good that is out there. And some of that the county does fund, other times they might not fund that. And so we were connected with many partners that you have out there and learn about their programs and have shared with other clients across the country. Washington County is a model that needs to be considered and it needs to be celebrated. What you have done historically and what you continue to do moving forward with the the focus on the adult and the criminal justice system and how to hopefully get them out of this cycle moving forward.
So if I could summarize that, I think you put it well that the scope of work for this was correction facility planning.
Correct. It was looking at the capacity.
Yeah, as opposed to the way I label what I've heard your interest in is public safety and justice, the ecosystem and the healing and the betterment of community. This project is not that larger and the state design has a lot to do with 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 dressing or approaching that goal versus what this project was was addressed at.
Yeah. And if I may add to that, think of also not just the public safety ecosystem, but an ecosystem of studies and assessments that we're doing as the county. Your board's public safety and justice white paper points to some town. We have this assessment. We're going to go through other phases. There is a lot of work that comes underneath that full umbrella.
But is still county and not societal and state.
Because the challenge is sometimes you make scopes too large and then you lose sight of what are you trying to accomplish? So this is just focused on the facilities, the built space of the jail and community corrections center.
Did you have any more comments, Commissioner Fein? Okay. I just want to step back and summarize. We've spent two hours on this, but it's been, I believe, from what I'm hearing from my colleagues, a very productive time. We're really grateful for the work that's gone into this. We need to touch back. I'm looking to you as the project head for this, reporting to Ms. Angie. If you could summarize, come back to us in an email. So so that we've got a summary of the next steps out of today's meeting, which isn't everything that's on the next step slide. But we've added in an additional touch point. And I want to make sure that we're we're clear with that additional touch point on where what we're trying to head to, what we're going to memorialize so that you can then feel very accomplished. I think you should walk away from this meeting feeling very accomplished. I think you've heard it from the board through our questions and our interest. And but we want to make sure that we're launching. The board's interested in making sure we've launched productive next steps that can be achieved. And that may mean you need to do a quick pass to make a few additions to the report before it's courtful final.
To the rapper board.
Okay, okay. Actually, I wasn't clear on that. Great.
And my thank you should be extended to your teams. I don't think this was just the, I mean, this has taken, I'm guessing, a village to get to this place.
Always a village.
Yeah. And there's just so much so much to learn. It's just incredible, the you know, the the history, the current status, what we're projecting, how how the facilities work together. And I just appreciate the knowledge base that you bring to the table. So thank you, and I'm looking forward to this. I'm looking forward to our funding discussions. And, you know, gee, two thousand fifty five will be here before we know it. And if you if you were still in office, you'd still be behind Roy Rogers. I did the math on that.
Wow. That's interesting.
I'm hoping to live in twenty fifty. I love this.
With that, should I move for adjournments?
Can I? Would you mind? I would just beg your for could I make two small comments at the end to this that are important to me?
Sure.
I know your time is valuable. First, I really appreciate everyone's flexibility and evolving the timeline. And I think it's important to state that it's really important to me that we not lose sight or momentum. And so if there are things I can be doing to help respond to you in a more timely fashion, don't say the word, whether it's presentations or additional data, I'm going to make it happen. The last thing is that we did spend the bulk of the time talking about what I know is intuitively most important, which is our justice involved people and our AICs. But a forty bed unit or something smaller with flexibility would minimize stress and workload on our staff. And we, understanding that PTSD is presumptive for our staff after five years of service, have a unique opportunity to design this facility intentionally to be trauma informed, not just for our AICs, but for the staff that are working in their ten, twelve, sixteen hours a day.
Good for you.
And with that, I just want to thank you for your time and your great questions because it will help us be more informed going forward.
Thank you.
I think you're you're touching on aspects of with the the next steps. What kind of work groups are needed, right? I know I heard from some of the PSCC reps on this this document and planning that they want to know, they want to feel good about what are the best practices? And do they need to go visit some of these best practice places and things like that? And we got to figure that out. I don't know if it's a must have or just having the presentations and the examples is sufficient. So cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we don't have anything else on the agenda. Thank you very much. So with that, I'm going to adjourn today's work session. Thank you.